Four, and at this point, we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this point, we'll ask anyone from the public who wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda to stand up and speak if they wish. Since no one is speaking up, we will close a public comment and move on to the
Roll call.
Joint update of the Planning Commission and Architectural Advisory Committee, the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan. And I, excuse me, before that, maybe Bridget, you want to cover our online protocol?
Yes, just I'll summarize. We are filming this live on PCT's website in Channel 27 Local News or local station. We are offering, excuse me, Spanish interpretation as well this evening. And we are starting the evening with a joint study session with our Architectural Advisory Committee. So I would like to do a roll call if we could, and then we'll see if Mr. Hernandez is coming. Commissioner Johannes?
Here.
Commissioner Riddick?
Here.
Commissioner Gorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Gossett?
Here.
Currently Chair Hernandez is absent. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Committee Member Poncini? Committee Member Hooker? And Committee Member Kukuchi? Thank you. And we have no minutes for this month.
Thank you.
So whenever Streetscape is ready.
Sure. Do we do roll?
Yes, we do.
For roll call?
Mm-hmm.
For both parties?
Complete. It's okay. It's busy.
Thank you, Commissioners, Committee Members. John Doughty for the record, we are thrilled to have each of you here tonight. This is intended to be pretty informal conversation. This is intended to first and foremost, I think, to provide each of you some feedback and what we've heard from the community process and give you a taste of some of the design work that is underway. This is something that we committed to when we came initially with this group as a joint meeting, and we appreciated that effort and that commentary process and feedback point. We know that we've seen some of you, many of you, at the follow-up meetings, and we thank you for your engagement with the community. Tonight, along with me is Cindy Zurgur from Tool Design, and our project manager will be presenting as well, Karen Decker. We also have other staff and folks have been involved in this project, including Irma Costa. And again, I think it's, I'm, you know, I'll be short, as short as I ever am, I know. You can yell at me about that. I want to first kind of speak to the overarching project goals, and to some extent, those are sort of long and, but I think they're important. So one is to revitalize Streetscape, and that effort stemmed from the CRY initiative, the Coastside Recovery Initiative, and looking at and focusing on both short and long-term solutions, one, coming out of the COVID pandemic time and then evolving into a longer-term stability and an economic vitality for the community. Team Vibrant was part of this package and really became the guiding piece for this effort. And basically, they recognized as a group of community members that we really needed to look at the whole package of how we deliver good services, and part of that was how do we better refine, define, and make downtown and Half Moon Bay even a better place than it is today. So this project also takes off from many efforts, including the city's work on the Parks Master Plan as well as the Okay. So in any event, sorry, I'm meandering, but let me get to the, let me get to the heart of really what I wanted to say. We're pleased to be here. I think we've done some great work, and we wanted to check in, we wanted to talk about this. We want to assure you that our efforts are focused on flexibility, focused on long-term viability in terms of designs, looking at how do we both encourage multimodal access, pedestrian, bicycle, as well as acknowledge that the automobile still remains with us and people do utilize that to get to and from downtown, and how do we make those things work? Again, the focus of this initially really started with the four-block Heritage Main Street, basically from the bridge to Correia's, but as part of the process and as part of the iteration that we started looking through when we scoped the work, this included also looking at both north and south sections of Main Street beyond the Heritage, just to see, and how do we deal with continuity, how do we deal with continuity of design, how do we deal with continuity of center lines, how do we deal with continuity of Streetscape and things of that nature? So that was the effort. So you'll see tonight in the presentation both a focus on a lot of work that's been started with the input from the community with the Heritage Main, and then ultimately you'll see, I think, some really good and interesting work that is a little more conceptual in nature, but still important work for both ends heading north and south from the Heritage Main area. So again, we want to make sure we think of this in the context that this is a planning study. This is not a final engineered design, it will not be final engineered design, but it is a start of a process and a start of a conversation. Obviously, as we look at and we look at designing and developing more engineered designs, civil engineering work, and all of those types of things with that, those will come back in some form and context as coastal development permits, as well as environmental review associated with those. The objective and great part to this is to try to mitigate much of the environmental impacts by providing for stormwater retention, stormwater treatment, and things of that nature within the, within the design itself, and not just piping it through and collecting it and sending it off to someone else or another property. So with that, I will turn it over to Karen, who I stepped on some of her slides, so I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Decker, I'm the Economic and Community Vitality Manager within the City Manager's Office. It's a pleasure to be with you, committee members, commissioners, colleagues in community. I'm excited to return to you this evening. It's been a few months, and we've gained traction on the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan project. Tonight, here's an overview of our agenda. We're going to provide just some stage setting and a refreshing of goals, what our focus area has been, and what we've been doing over the last few months to engage the community. We will spend the bulk of our time together going over the design concepts and what we've heard. I am delighted to be joined by Cindy Zurgur, Lead Design and Principal at Tool Design, who you will hear from momentarily. There you can see project goals. I don't believe in the kind of PowerPoints where I just read, you could read faster than I can talk, so while you take a look at those bullet points, those are the goals of the project. And as John had started to say, this project was conceived out of a larger effort. It was actually the first of its kind for our city's economic plan coming out of COVID. That was the Coastside Recovery Initiative. And out of that initiative, a task force of 17 coastiders produced 15 recommendations. They're available in this report that's a public document, and one of those recommendations called for the revitalization of Main Street by that working team, Team Vibrant. And you see the word vibrant up there. Our team did not look at that loosely. We reflected on it and wanted to be really clear about what we meant about vibrant. And in that context, a vibrant space is designed as both having an economic purpose in terms of the facilitation of goods and services, but it also has a community purpose in terms of a space where you're exchanging ideas and traditions and cultures, and you're having experiences, and you're eating and shopping. And so for, through data-backed recommendations, the downtown Main Street became their focus. In terms of this project in particular, you will see in that green rectangle a focus on Heritage Main. And while the focus of the project from day one, when the RFQ, RFP was released, we also encouraged the design firm and structured the community feedback about looking at the entirety of Main in addition to the focus on Heritage. And part of the reason is because there's a lot of institutional knowledge and dollars invested and a lot of expertise for plans that have laid down some excellent groundwork. We have the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, the Green Infrastructure Plan, of course, you all know the Local Coastal Land Use Plan. And some of the concepts that Cindy is going to be taking us through fall into those parts of Main Street that are not Heritage Main, and that was not by design, that was a result of robust community feedback. North Main came up a lot, and we'll go into more detail about that. Kitty Fernandez came up a lot, there was great enthusiasm and support in the Parks Master Plan for revitalization of Kitty Fernandez. It also happens to be the largest footprint or hardscape, including the frontage at the library in MacDutra. How can we revitalize that? So concepts that you'll be hearing tonight span Main Street, but the project focus has always been on Heritage. In terms of the project timeline, we have come a long way. Last summer, the team, the Tool Design team, started looking at an existing conditions review, including some of the documents that I just mentioned. Visioning and charrettes and community engagement was extensive. We got a lot of community input throughout the summer and the fall. And all this to say, the take-home message I want you to know is that the project schedule is on time and it's on budget. In terms of engagement, engagement has really been the foundation of this effort. We've really had robust community input, and like any important project like this, it's really critical to the success. In your packet, you have a memo summarizing the details of the engagement that occurred over several months. Starting with Discovery Week, we really wanted to hear from the community, and it was very open-ended in the beginning. What are some of your likes about Main Street? You'll recall, what were some of the dislikes about Main Street? What do you think has untapped potential? What do you not want to see change? Out of that process, we built on those ideas and entered Discovery Week about a month later, and we engaged 90 members of the community, adding to the other 150. And when I say we engaged 150 people in Discovery Week and 90 people in Design Week, I don't mean that someone was walking by and we handed them a flyer and we told them about the project. I mean that people dropped in during open design studios, there was meaningful engagement with the Tool Design team, with staff, sometimes upwards of an hour, public meetings. So it's really meaningful engagement. These were the people who took the time to come out to the library, to come out to the IDES Hall and various other locations. And we had a much wider reach who heard about the project. They may not have civically engaged by coming to a public meeting, but we reached a wide number of people vis-à-vis the Daily Journal who reached out and said, hey, we're hearing all this buzz about this downtown Main Street project, tell me about it. The Half Moon Bay Review covered it, KHMB Radio ran ads letting people know when they could engage. And we had a lot of marketing and communication activities that are better summarized in your memo in greater detail. In that third box, the green box, we also released a survey in January that we just wrapped up earlier this month, and that was also a really important tool of engagement. And we did that because we had a lot of feedback in September and October, but while the Tool Design time, the Tool Design team was picking up their pencils, we just wanted to make sure that that feedback loop was continued, and people who may not have been able to participate or heard about the project later would have an opportunity to do so. So the survey cast an even wider net, we heard from an additional 164 people. And what also, another reason why this was important was, we wanted to see if there was any low-hanging fruit, if you will, in terms of what could be done sooner that would require minimal investment, given that we know that this is a multi-phase, multi-year, multimillion-dollar project. I guess one more key takeaway I just want to cover before we wrap up engagement is, to us, to the project team, the range of participants were just as important as the number of participants. A lot of time and care was taken to ensure that we would have a lot of diverse representation within all of these community gatherings. We had long-term residents at tables debating ideas with people who moved here a few years ago. We had business perspective, we had youth perspective, age-friendly initiative advocates, nonprofits. It was a really impressive turnout. And the division that I come from in the City Manager's Office, the Economic and Community Vitality Division, this is a new division, we're like a year and a half old. And so this project gave me and my team an opportunity to look at how we engage with the community in some new ways, not, you know, tried and true, the same systems of outreach that we've used for a long time. Nothing against those systems, but I think that we can always improve in terms of engaging with the community and trying to reach the hard-to-reach and people who may not have ever been to any form of a public meeting and used that forum before. And so in trying to do that, we got creative. We did pop-ups at Half Moon Bay High School in Moon Ridge. A couple of Saturdays ago at the library, all day in excess of nine hours, the Mexican consulate was here, and Julissa and Irma from my team were there with QR codes and paper copies saying, hey, while you're waiting so long in line, we have this project that's looking at Main Street if you want to share what you think. We also engaged a youth commission. You know, we could have taken a flyer to Alas and said, hey, come by the library, but instead we said, hey, could you fit us into your agenda at your staff meeting? So talk about meeting the community where they're at, we're really trying to do that. And this project gave us an opportunity to try, and I'm pleased with the results. In terms of what we heard from all of that feedback, wayfinding was compelling. All in all, a huge need to improve signage, especially for visitors. We have heard anecdotally for years, and I'm sure you all have too, that so many people are not aware that there is a Main Street. So many people exiting on 92 make a right, they go to the beach, maybe they go to Sam's, but a lot of people have made a tradition to come to Half Moon Bay and don't realize there's a Heritage Main Street or Historic Main Street. No gateway or monument signage, which we've been able to install at the end of South Main, but not in other locations. North Main Street, through our survey questions, they weren't tied to a particular geography, but respondents really wanted improved visibility at key intersections, and that came through over and over again, including at Lewis Foster Drive at the high school. Crosswalks were among top responses for making Main Street safer for pedestrians and drivers. For Heritage Main, a lot of talk and response and enthusiasm for repurposing of space. People like the mom-and-pop shops and the restaurants, they want more activation though. So how do we design to that? Parking. Parking evokes really strong opinions across a wide range of options. Some options were, what's wrong with the herringbone? Others were, it's so safe, what if a long-bed truck is parked there? Where's the parking garage? We should have parking garages. Parking garages are terrible. We should be one-way, we should be a pedestrian mall. So we've had a lot of diverse feedback about parking, and I'm sure that doesn't come as a surprise. But what we're proposing meets various constituents that we have to address right now, and it features flexibility, to John's earlier point, by design, in order to provide options down the road. Kitty Fernandez, which I had mentioned earlier, largest public space in downtown, so much enthusiasm across multiple design concepts during Design Week. And finally, just an overall note about the survey, people really raved about tree lights. Tree lights are a slam dunk, like the creation of an ambiance, a lot of feedback about not enough places to gather, not enough places to sit, wanting more landscaping and overall downtown furnishing, more places to sit. And overall, we heard the community wants a safe, cohesive space in Half Moon Bay for residents and for visitors. These ideas for the future are intended to enhance the things we love. We love the quaintness of Half Moon Bay, everybody loves the character of Half Moon Bay. We heard over and over again how Main Street has such great bones, it need not be overly designed, it can be enhanced, it can be safer. And with that, Cindy is going to go through more detail in terms of these different elements of the design progression. Cindy Zurgur.
Great, thank you, Karen. Commission members, committee members, thank you for the time and for your involvement in this project. Hopefully you can hear me all right. I also just want to, before I get started on some of the design work, just really commend the staff for their dedication, as mentioned from Karen. The effort to engage with the community is really impressive. This is the work I do on a daily basis, I work on downtown streetscapes all over the place. And I just want to say how rich your efforts have been to really turn people out in the engagement process. So it's been a joy to work with the city staff and community members. So I'm going to talk a bit about some of where we're at with the design, particularly focusing on the wayfinding, that was mentioned earlier by Karen, and certainly was a hot topic for people who engaged. We'll focus on Heritage Main, again, the heart of the project that we're working on, share with you some ideas for North Main and Kitty Fernandez. And as John mentioned, we're really in the concept design phase, there would be additional phases, design development, final design, that would be part of this project, of course, or the future phases of this project. So from a wayfinding perspective, we worked with Opticos Design, they were here as part of the charrette, worked together to identify a wayfinding strategy. We're not getting into real design specifics with our wayfinding recommendations, but really saw some real strategies that the city could take on pretty darn quickly. So improving the clarity of signage for vehicular traffic to provide legible direction into Main Street, not just, you know, regulatory signage, but things that tell you how far it is and destinations in the downtown would be really helpful. Introducing a hierarchy of signage, thinking about gateway treatments, thinking about your progression as you come into downtown, that's really reinforces people know to get into the downtown. Thinking about additional pedestrian scale signage, this would be really a great win for your downtown. Reinforcing, you can walk this distance to a destination, here's some businesses, some community institutions you may want to walk to in the downtown, you have a really wonderful, compact street structure here. Creating visual cohesion among all science types, so thinking about perhaps some design standards around your sign type, especially those that are done by the city. Certainly, you know, some of the eclectic sense of business owners, of course, you want to allow for that, but some cohesion to your system would be really wonderful. And, sorry, the legend on the bottom is a little shifted down, but we did look at places where wayfinding would be enhanced and some ideas around that. So the big red dot shows you a gateway, we'll show that in a little while, a conceptual idea of how to really emphasize the downtown Main Street and where to go to get downtown from Highway 92. Thinking about monument signages, you have that on the south at Main Street at the one, and it was a wonderful feature, how could we think about incorporating some of that into the historic entrance into downtown, which is at Kelly? Things like regulatory signage, right now, there's the sequencing of some of your regulatory signage as you're coming on the one toward Kelly, it tells you all about going to the beach, but it doesn't tell you about Main Street until a little while after. So just about some like strategies around the sequencing of those signages would be really great. And then the yellow dots, or excuse me, the green, is about kind of legibility and wayfinding within a walk shed, or specifically oriented toward pedestrians as well. So some key locations, again, reinforcing, it's not that far to walk to these destinations within the community. So now I'm going to jump into the heart of the project focus, of course, and the presentation tonight to talk about Heritage Main. As Karen mentioned, we heard a wide-ranging feedback, some real exciting ideas from a number of people, and work to really strike a balance in our design concept. And these, what I'm showing here is some conceptual, excuse me, some precedent imagery of other streets and other downtown locations that demonstrate the idea of a flush Main Street. This provides a lot of flexibility in how the street functions currently and could function into the future. So a flush street is one that limits the number of curbs. You might have curbed condition around, say, a planted area, but really the street can function from edge to edge, from building face to building face, as sort of a plaza in a way. So it allows pedestrians to feel very comfortable walking across, you can shut the street down for festivals should you want to. It can live into the future in different iterations that you're thinking about, whether that's one-way configuration or a different sort of plaza idea for the downtown. But the important thing is, is this strikes a balance right now with, you know, that idea of enhancing pedestrian space, allowing for parking in the downtown, and allowing for flexible uses along the downtown. So this is a small concept, hopefully you can see it on your screen in front of you, but the idea, again, this is just a small snapshot of the concept as we are right now, we'll look at it in another graphic in the next slide, but what I want to hit on here is that flush street allowing for real flexibility in what we call universal design, much more accessible from an ADA perspective, allowing people to not have to navigate through different types of slopes and curb ramps as well, makes it a lot more accessible and easy to navigate if you have any kind of mobility impairment. In this concept, we're shifting parking to parallel to allow for, again, more pedestrian space, allows for additional tree canopy, and potentially gathering spaces, again, it's a very symmetrical cross-section that we'll look at on the next slide. Seating areas, again, we heard a lot about having seating in the downtown, not that's just privatized, but that is public as well. These can be accommodated throughout, certainly in that, in furnishing zones and at curb bumpouts, or in parking areas, you have some parklets in your downtown, so there's opportunities to still use that parking space for additional cafe spill-out space and other types of seating. We did a, I'm getting a little into the weeds to talk about the southwest corner at Kelly, but you have a bus line that goes along the Kelly and certainly on to Main Street, and so thinking about the curvature of that, the geometry of the intersection right there is pretty important. So we've looked at that in great detail to make sure the buses could turn appropriately. So here's the concept in cross-section and in plan view, a little bit zoomed in. So on the left, what you see is the existing cross-section, so you have about 10 feet for pedestrians, and that's not your clear zone, that's including your tree pit area. So at times, it's really narrow. So at times, it's really narrow for people walking along here, next down, and a lot of places to about six feet. And then you have, of course, the angled parking and travel lanes, and it's a very symmetrical cross-section. The concept on the right proposes a really generous 10-foot sidewalk along with a 6-foot furnishing zone, so you have basically a functioning 16 feet of space for pedestrians to walk, to also have potentially seating in that area. It feels much more comfortable as people are walking to a breast, or in families, or with strollers, or any sort of additional mobility devices. The parking, we're recommending changing that to parallel. That allows for the additional space that you have in the pedestrian space. The parking is eight feet, and that would allow for, again, some wonderful cafe, you know, parklet programs. You could still implement that there. The parking areas would be broken up every so often with tree bumpout, which would also have, could have planting at the ground plane as well. So very symmetrical from side to side, again, 16 feet on either side. So this, ooh, this looks a little fuzzy, gets a little bit more into the detail and tells you a couple of things. We've already talked about it, the 10-foot pedestrian clear zone, 6-foot furnishing zone, some additional areas that we're looking at for things like bike parking, where you might place your seating along the area. And what I want to mention, again, the parallel parking is a change for the downtown, and there would be a loss, but in formalizing the angled parking on your perpendicular streets, right now, you have a kind of some variation there. You have some parallel, you have angled, and then you have 90-degree on some of the cross streets. And let's formalize that and make it more of a consistent angled parking, and so you can recapture some of those spaces that you left on Main Street on those perpendicular streets as we formalize that. In terms of the material palette, we gave, we shared a variety of options during the design workshop, and heard a lot about the importance of focusing on the beautiful coastal landscape and the textured and natural materials that are here. So these were some ideas, precedent imagery, or just sort of emotional aspects of the colors, the different type of material. Certainly, you have a beautiful library with some great furnishings there that we can call upon and really create a cohesive landscape and hardscape and furnishing palette for the downtown. And now, these aren't finalized or selected at this time, but again, some ideas. As you were to go into design development, you would, you know, select a number of these furnishings. But the pavement, we heard a lot about the importance of it feeling very natural. Integral colored concrete could be an option. Accent that with pavers in the right locations can really reinforce, again, where to expect people walking, where you might have seating, and where you might be driving or parking. Seating, again, very clean, simple aesthetic, calling upon wood materials, natural in style and form. Planters, you have a lot of different planters on your Main Street. Some of that's really fun and eclectic. Perhaps in the downtown public realm, you have a little bit more of a cohesive palette that has either round or square options, but weathered steel, wood materials, again, some of the, we're taking cues from your library and some of the aesthetic there. Lighting, we heard we can deviate from the city standard and think about a new pedestrian scale, excuse me, new lighting standard. Perhaps the orientation is down toward the streets, so you have more of a dark sky, but it really casts good light on the downtown and would work with any kind of tree lighting that you have as well. Receptacles, we know you just purchased new receptacles. We want to make sure that those remain or are in place in good locations in your downtown. And as you think maybe toward 2.0 with your receptacles, maybe something a little bit shorter in stature could be beneficial and supplement in some areas. Bike parking, this you have downtown, but it's a fixture that's, some of them are fixtures that are really hard to bike, Eric, excuse me, lock your bike to. So some simple ideas here, very, very clean style and aesthetic that could really complement other features of the downtown. I'm not going to dwell too much on the trees either, but one thing we did here is, the current tree canopy is really dense. It blocks your beautiful architecture that you have downtown, even though they're limbed up, the canopy is really dense. So thinking about maybe a tree that has a little bit more dappled feeling, so Chinese pastash is an option. There's some other options you might think about. The Chinese pastash is a beautiful fall color as well. But again, that idea of creating a canopy to really create a sense of enclosure for pedestrians, something that is also easy to maintain in the downtown. In terms of plant and ground cover, you know, again, the idea of this muted palette for the downtown, but perhaps there's some pops of color through some of the ground plane and the different ground covers that we think about. So these are some examples. I won't get into the scientific names here or the Latin names at all, but low-maintenance, pops of color, and adapted to really the Half Moon Bay growing conditions will be pretty important. This was the feature I mentioned earlier, that we, you saw the graphic showed different ideas for wayfinding and signage in the Half Moon Bay area. This would be just one idea for really claiming that entry experience as you come from the 92. So 92 is on your left, and this arched concept goes over Main Street. As we think about some geometric changes to North Main, we can reclaim some space there. So it's not just the entry signage or the gateway feature, but perhaps enhancing through some additional landscaped areas as well could be really wonderful to welcome people into downtown Main Street, Half Moon Bay. Now, North Main, I'm going to spend a little time on this. So this is really from the bridge. We worked on a concept really from the bridge all the way to the One. But the real important things I want to mention here are the opportunities to create a safer environment for people walking and biking, even in this location. If you were to repurpose some of the space, you can get a shared-use path on both sides of Main Street. And this would allow for people who want to walk or bike, maybe in families or children. This is a pretty, an area that you wouldn't necessarily, as a family, want to bike with your children on the street. But a shared-use path condition on either side is possible. There takes some lane reconfiguration and some things to think about, but it is, I think, a concept that could work here. Also, thinking about consolidating and narrowing your driveways, there's a real, a lot of confusion at some of the driveway locations, and there's potential to consolidate in some areas, and I'll show you a concept where we did that in one location. At intersections, thinking about combination through and right turn movements in particular areas, we worked with the city. We looked at auto turn movements. That means we took big semi trucks to see if it could work, to move them along the concept, and it works in the way we've configured it here. Again, another opportunity to really bring that downtown Main Street aesthetic up here in a, with a light touch with vegetation and street trees. And thinking about places in this area even for activation, things like art murals on your walls could also be integrated into this location. So just one example, this is North Main at Lewis Foster Drive, as you go up to the high school. So teeing in that intersection in a little more formalized way could really help with some safety concerns there. So we have a right turn right out from Lewis Foster at Main Street. This is something I think the city was exploring already. We would commend that and say, let's also think about narrowing some of the travel lane there as well. We're suggesting a new pedestrian crossing just, I guess, south of Lewis Foster Drive. And then you'll see in this example, an example of a consolidated driveway. So driveways at Ace Hardware, there's a huge driveway apron at that location, and it gets pretty confusing even for people who are driving through that area. So let's consolidate that and create some way where you go into one driveway, and then perhaps if you want to go to the property at the left, you go in through another threshold. And this is north at, I'm sorry, Main at 92. Again, what you see here is removal of some of your turning lanes, or a consolidation is what I would call it, where you have a north, sorry, a through and a right configuration in some areas. This allows us to really shorten the crossing distance and allow for less, what we call pedestrian exposure, less time that they're exposed to being, to cars in this configuration. We did, again, run auto turn movements through here and feel very comfortable that a lot of the big trucks that need to come downtown or into this location are accommodated through this concept. And then we're going to jump down, back down to the south of Main, to Kitty Fernandez Park. Again, as Karen mentioned, we heard a lot about the potential of the space in the downtown, sorry, in the southern part of the downtown, to really make it a wonderful community space. It's one of your largest spaces in the downtown. It's really oriented, it feels, toward the existing residents there. So somehow, thinking about a concept that really embraces Main Street and makes it feel a part of that. So this concept, we're calling it the French porch concept, which thinks about, which incorporates ideas of seating elements, planters, flexible space, a very comfortable vegetated backdrop. We know that still, that separation between this location and the adjacent property owners will be pretty important for privacy, for them, for comfort, for those who are sitting in the park space. So some ideas here, and some ideas of maybe, you know, porch swings could be there. They could be movable, they could be fixed. There could be other types of seating elements brought throughout. Vines, greens could be a wonderful way to address that privacy screen. And the second concept we developed was this idea of plaza and green concept. This would be a flat lawn and plaza space and introduce a variety of different trees, canopy and ornamental, toward the pedestrian, or sorry, the privatized area. Again, creating some sort of division or separation there between, with low plantings, perhaps a concrete wall that could incorporate signage. Kitty Fernandez Park could say something about the downtown Half Moon Bay, you know, and in this concept, the furnishings would really be flexible and allow for, even you could think about food trucks, or you could activate the space in different ways as you wanted to with art and different types of installations. So just a few images, again, on that idea of plaza and green, and how you might incorporate elements of your growing aesthetic with the downtown library, and certainly incorporate art and flexible seating. So that was a lot, and I think we're meant to go to next steps. I don't know if we want to have a pause right now, or you want to talk about next steps. On to John.
So we, thank you. We know that was a lot to take, to take in. And as Karen indicated, we don't need to read this to you. You can certainly read it. Basically, this is, again, is intended as a check-in, as a conversation. We'd love to hear from both committee and commission, your thoughts about what you've heard and what we've heard, and what you may have heard through the grapevine and things of that nature. But ultimately, our plan ultimately is to finalize the master plan this spring, and looking at roughly May or so, that our hope is to ultimately have the council accept the streetscape master plan. We are looking, again, at both short-term wins, short-term things that we might be able to do. Number of things have been mixed into that. One thing that we'll talk, that we can talk briefly about is the survey. You know, one guess of what came up with that one, I'll answer for you. The flower, the hanging flower baskets, was number one item on the survey issues of things they love about downtown and want it brought back. So that's just an example of, I think, some of the things that, that are some simple things, the banners, some other issues that we're dealing with. So I think we want to mix in the idea of some short-term opportunities and short-term wins, along with looking and continuing to look at the long-term aspects of this plan, and ultimately trying to figure out various ways to move portions of it forward, if that makes sense. Obviously, funding is a huge issue, and at this point, there is no identified funding for this. I know that's usually a question that comes about. Why do we do this if there's no funding? Well, we do this because we hope that funding will follow in some form or fashion, both private, philanthropic, and public funding perhaps in this mix. So that's why we do this. So that closes out our presentation, and we're obviously happy to take questions and take your comments and try to do the best we can in that process.
Thank you for that. I was going to open public comment first before we go into questions and/or comments. And I have one person who would like to speak out, Colleen Henney.
Hi there. I'm Colleen Henney. I have two shops on Main Street, and my husband and I have started the, we founded the Half Moon Bay Downtown Association in 2019, and have tried to work with the city as an advocate group for all the businesses downtown. We're very privileged and thankful to have been included in some of these listening sessions and stakeholder groups. We're really excited about this project, and especially, I think, the importance of the signage and the wayfinding at 92 and Main on the north side. We continue to field comments about customers coming into our shop saying they never knew that there was a Main Street in downtown, even after coming here for 10 years, 20 years. Their husband has, you know, conferences at the Ritz or whatever, and they just drive down 92 on One, and they go to the beach or the hotels, and they just never knew that we existed. So that overarching situation at 92 and Main is just, I can't even say how important that is for our businesses on Main Street that have really struggled through COVID. Anytime there's a street closure, anytime, I mean, 92 still has one-way traffic on it from a sinkhole last year. So, you know, those grossly impact our businesses on Main Street, and so traffic is just, it's our lifeblood. It's what, it's what supports our families. I mean, we support our family from our businesses on Main Street. So that's just hugely important. Also, I just really want to thank, you know, this amazing agency for coming up with these beautiful plans. We're super excited about, you know, the widening of the sidewalks, making things more accessible to people. We still have people in wheelchairs that can't get into our buildings because of stairs. There was a woman a few months ago that has to, she has to bring her automated, her motorized wheelchair, because she can't navigate the sidewalks with her manual wheelchair on Main Street. And she loves our town, and she loves to come shopping here. So that's, you know, that feels like an emergency to me. The other day, it was Saturday, I was driving, I was crossing the street to go to work. There was a woman pulled up in a minivan, and it just struck me, like, it was her whole family. She had her husband there, her kids. They were unloading stuff from her minivan. It was like they were, had landed at the beach, and they were parking there for a whole day of fun and activities. And I feel like that's really kind of what we're getting known for. Main Street is a destination. It's a safe place to shop. A lot of places aren't safe anymore to shop. People come down from the city, from over the hill, from all over the Bay Area to come to Main Street and shop. And sometimes they bring their whole family with lunches and water bottles and strollers, and they're parking there for the day. I think one thing that, in all of this streetscape situation, understanding that we do need to sort of obliterate the parking situation on Main Street, the herringbone is dangerous, we know it doesn't work, we're going to have to reduce parking spots on Main Street. And the parallel feels like, you know, the common, safe way to do that. I do think if we're going to put a, you know, major wayfinding sign or arch or improvement on 92 and Main, that we really do need to provide for the influx of people that are going to come, right? We're going to peel off, I mean, the sheriff tells us 50,000 people on any given week We're going to peel off, I mean, the sheriff tells us 50,000 people on any given weekend come down 92 into our town, 50,000 people. And the hope is to peel off some of those down into Main Street. And where are those people going to park? And so I do believe that we need to be proactive and forward-thinking and come up with a place to put a parking garage. We just have to do that. There's no getting around that. In Walnut Creek at the Broadway Shopping Center, they have a big, beautiful parking garage. The first two hours are free. After that, you have to pay. And I feel like long-term, that could potentially be a, an income generating situation for the city. I think that's all I have to say. Thanks for hearing me out. Thanks for looking at this project in general.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, are there any questions from the commission or our architectural advisory committee? Do you want to start?
Just push it, push the button and it should light up.
There we go. Thank you. Now, this was, this was really great, and I'm hoping that we can get a copy of this Hard copy, like just 11 by 17 would be great. Because I think this is something we want to keep referring to as this proceeds, so I appreciate that. And I'm particularly happy to hear everybody wanting to change the parking on Main Street. It's so bad. And it is for the large trucks, long bed trucks as such, you can't hardly get down Main Street. So good, that's really great. And I remember when there was just parallel parking on Main Street. And that was much, much better, so thank you. Anyway, look forward to seeing what's, what's going to be done. And I particularly like the idea of the, of the flush street, streetscape, and I've seen how well that works in other cities in the Bay Area. And I think that's a great solution, and I hope that that moves forward. So I think one thing that, and probably like to hear what Steve has to say about trees and, because with all of this work, it appears to me that the trees are going to have to be replaced and a whole new planting plan for downtown. So I think that might be something that, I don't know how the public's going to feel about that when it really starts happening. That would be, I think, something where the public really needs to be kept up to speed on what might be going to happen downtown. And the, I assume that we'd need to put in very large specimen trees to start with, and so that's going to be a tough budget item, but I'd like to hear Steve's thoughts on all of that. But I, I really like the concepts that, that you're showing and look forward to seeing the design as it goes along. Thank you.
I, I have concerns. I remember in our, in our last scoping session with this group, there was a great deal of, there was a lot of comment about saving the trees on Main Street, and it's obvious the trees now are going to be changed out. There are good reasons not to save them. All the roots are shallow because there's no irrigation on them. They're trashing all the sidewalks. They're in the wrong location. But I do think that going from what we have now on Main Street to a bunch of little twags that are six feet high with bracing structure around them won't work. So if I were in charge of the budget, I would be looking to spend the money on large trees when they're installed and backburner the Kitty Fernandez end of Main Street. I think if you're going to focus on the area from the bridge to Coria's, putting the money into the trees, there would be a much stronger statement and frankly, much more useful. I like the idea of improving Fernandez, but it's a long ways from downtown, from the historic section. There is a welding firm here on the coast that built an over-the-highway arch for the city of, I believe it was Lodi, that's huge, and it has great structures on it and all sorts of things. And they could not only build this thing if you wanted to, but they could contribute a great deal to the design. So it'd be worth getting in touch with them and finding out what their in-house designers can do. They've come up with some fantastic projects and won a lot of bids in the past, and they're structurally capable as well. It looks like the Kitty Fernandez proposal demolishes the concrete block wall along the sidewalk that makes the 30-inch wide sidewalk or whatever that is. That's a great move. Good job on that.
I apologize for missing the first scoping session. I was on vacation that, that week. So I may say some things, and I hope they're not repetitive or questions that were asked previously. I am wondering if consideration was given to how this Main Street will function during some of the festivals and other events that we have in town that are so vital to the, to not only the commerce but the tourism of the, of the downtown area. We probably have four parades throughout the year and a number of festivals with booths. So I think it's of key importance to make sure that the new downtown plan will enhance, if not accommodate, those festivals and those parades. Another thing that I've, I've noticed, just because my office is in downtown, is that our, our downtown is a little different from a lot of other downtowns is, in that we don't have, a lot of, a lot of other downtowns have parking or alleyways behind their commercial buildings, so a lot of deliveries can be made in back of the stores. And on our downtown, I've noticed a number of times where delivery trucks or maintenance trucks, very large vehicles actually have to park on Main Street as they drop off their supplies or, or deliver other goods. So there is sometimes congestion and there is sometimes one-way traffic during those times. And I'm not sure if the, if the new downtown plan will accommodate that too. Another thing that I've thought of, just, just once again relating to the, to the events, and I know this would involve some private participation, but the mention of Kitty Fernandez Park and what Chad mentioned about knocking down the walls around that park was, that's how McDucha Park existed previously. It was walled in and not visible to the general public, and as a result, a lot of people didn't use it. A lot of people feared going in it. So I agree that that's a proper approach for Kitty Fernandez, too. But I also look at the opportunity with the IDES Hall and its vast parking lot, and that is a center of activity during the Pumpkin Festival and during the Chamarita. And I know it would take some type of cooperation from, from the IDES Hall and a way to possibly make that more of a, of a hub and what it could potentially be during festivals. And in regards to trees, I think, I think that's, that's always going to be a tough item. There are some trees that just don't thrive here on the coast because of our climate. And, and I think it is changing a little bit because of climate change, but there are some trees that just will not thrive here on the coast. So I think that's just something that really has to be paid attention to when the street trees are, are selected. Thank you.
My fellow commissioners, who would like to go first? Commissioner Gorn?
So, so I have a bunch of questions, and I know it's not, nothing's final, but it's always, like, you guys did a great job. It's always fun to like reimagine everything, and I really appreciate that you didn't just reimagine North Main the way you reimagined everything else. Like, you focused on safety and, and on, I don't know, making that a more workable space instead of just trying to make it more, you know, prettier. So the flush concept is wonderful. That's amazing. I wanted to know if that goes from the bridge to IDES? Is that what we're thinking? Or does it stop at Miramontes? Like, what, I'm not sure how far down we're talking about. So maybe, I mean, there's other people who have questions too, but I also didn't see, I know that you're talking about changing the bike standards, but I don't see new bike parking in here anywhere. And so that seems like a really important part of what happens downtown. And the Kitty Fernandez is beautiful. That's like, the porch design is such an improvement over what's there. But, but to Chad's point, sort of, I don't know what, if there's any sort of staging yet or phases, but that would be a later phase, I would think. It's like, and I think that you, in terms of how you laid it out, you made it pretty clear that wayfinding is number one, which would be great. Parking is probably number one A. And I, I kind of gathered that from your presentation, but I just wanted to see if there was any kind of phasing imagined yet. So I would, anyway. I wondered how many spaces you actually lose on that Main Street with the parallel parking? I imagine quite a lot, but, but I also want to know how many you'd gain from angled parking on the side streets. I think that would help sort of, help people get over the fact that there's going to be some loss of parking on Main Street, particularly when you close it off, obviously. But I think merchants kind of get that increased foot traffic is, and increased traffic in general is far superior to being able to park at the donut stop, at the donut shop. So that was pretty important. I had a question about when you put up next steps, you put up the sign of Historic Main Street, next left, and I'm hoping that's not what we're talking about here because that seemed kind of hokey and 70s. And so I know we're not far along on this path, nothing's final or whatever, but I would kind of go personally away from that and more toward the, the sort of modern, open, cool-looking library and, and flush concept that you're already talking about. And that sign looks the opposite of that. Let's see, is there anything else? No, I think that's it. That's all I have. Thank you. That's fine.
Commissioner Rudditt?
Thank you, Vice Chair Gossett. I'd like to add my praise to the project team for the, as Ms. Decker said, the traction that exists in this in the relatively short period of time. And there are exciting ideas here. I, I also think the flush street design idea is a very exciting one, combined with the parallel parking and the generous sidewalk and the increased space for trees that begins to, well, it would make a real improvement in the pedestrian experience and environment of Main Street. It sort of approaches a little bit my, my ultimate vision of what it would be like if a, a block of Main Street was a pedestrian-only. But I have the sense that, I have a pretty strong sense that the Main Street community is not yet wanting to go in the direction of pedestrian-only zones. Like, I happened to be in Palo Alto yesterday and walked on the block of Ramona Street, which is the block south of University there has recently been closed off to cars and, and the majority of the street is taken up with parklets. So I, it was vivid to me that in, in certain environments where there's a real density of eateries and cafes and restaurants and breweries, that, that's a really good solution. I, I suspect that today in Half Moon Bay, we don't have that density on Main Street that would really support it. But, but as I, as I said, thank you for the design ideas you're showing around the flush street and the expanded sidewalks. I think that approaches some of the, some of the benefits that pedestrians are looking for. You know, I have to admit, maybe I'm unusual in this regard, but when we were talking about Gateway on Highway 92 coming into town, I always imagined an arch spanning Highway 92 saying, "Turn left here," rather than an arch over Main Street. But, you know, I, I'm not sure, I guess I thought about that because it would be the maximum visibility for people on 92, but, but I see what you're thinking of there and, and would certainly be open-minded to it. I, I agree with Commissioner Gorn that when, when we get to the stage, we, we should think carefully about the language involved, whether his, a sign pointing to Historic Main Street would drive as many visitors as one talking about the incredible shopping and dining opportunities. But that's, that's not really my field, so I'll defer on that. I agreed with committee member Hooker, too, that when, when it comes to priorities, I think it, it's a, it's a must-have to do a good job with whatever happens with the trees on that north stretch of the heritage part of Main Street. And if, if we had to put Kitty Fernandez to a later phase, I think that would be the intelligent thing to do. And my last comment, for the time being at least, is you mentioned at one point murals, which I encourage you to think creatively about. We have some pretty excellent momentum in this field downtown in the last couple of years, and I think it, I think it makes a, I hear a lot about, a positive stuff about it from people, visitors and residents. And I think maybe it even does more psychological good than we are consciously aware of. So I'd, I'd certainly encourage you to think, think big about the future of murals. Thank you.
Commissioner Joannas?
Actually, I don't have any comments, but I do want to ask a little bit about this parking garage concept. Was that ever introduced into the planning at all? This, I know, I have talked to some businesses along Main Street and they were, somehow has, have this idea that along with this is going to be a parking garage. And so I'm not really sure where that's coming from and if that is part of the streetscape.
We'll take all, we're assuming we're taking all the questions. We'll, we'll, we'll react and respond to that accordingly. Thanks.
That's pretty much what I had. And of the folks that came through to the design sessions, did we keep track of how many business owners actually came through and provided comment and how were their comments actually integrated into this? You know, because, community members, yes, but I, I just want to understand what the business owners are thinking of and how their concepts were integrated into here as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'd also like to state that I like the progress that has been made with this project and the many good ideas. I like the wayfinding, and I agree with my fellow commissioners, so I won't even repeat anything that they've said and the fellow committee members. Thank you so much for helping us tonight. One thing I'd like to know about is other cities use smart parking programs where they utilize underutilized parking areas. And we do have a lot of underutilized parking in Half Moon Bay. And we do have a lot of underutilized parking in Half Moon Bay that could be considered. I didn't know if that was considered at all. And then another question that I have is, can the trees be kept and thinned by hiring a technical pruner to thin the canopy rather than, you know, it's hard to get large trees into that kind of space to thrive. And these trees are doing okay, but I do understand if it impacts the streetscape in terms of, you know, if the city were to move forward with a flush street, that might not be feasible. So I agree with our committee members who recommended that we put money into large trees if needed. And then I wanted to know if murals could be put on the garbage receptacles and/or utility boxes like they do in Redwood City. They have, their downtown area has really cool art on the garbage receptacles, and it, I think, adds a lot to the vibrancy of the downtown area. And that's it.
Do you want me to handle some of the questions, John?
Would you take a whack at what you think are sort of yours, and then I'll jump in where I figure they're staffed a little bit?
There's some for Karen, too, so we'll tag team on this. But thanks, you guys, for your comments and your questions, all very thoughtful. I meant to call it a recency issue, but I'm going to start with the murals because I think that's an awesome idea. I think there are opportunities, you know, thinking through a mural program, you know, and how you're thinking about incorporating local artists could be really fun. That is a way to sort of activate the space in fun ways. And then I wanted to hit the overall, the flush concept and where the boundaries of that are first, and that is from the bridge to Correia's. That's feasible there in that location. It's feasible elsewhere, but I think for, you know, really spend your money and your time figuring that out in the core of Heritage Main. The festivals, there was a question around how do we accommodate that? And I think, you know, the benefit of a flush concept is that it really operates as a plaza when you want. You can close it. You could use some of the planter ideas. There's some examples of projects we've worked on where business owners actually use the planters to frame out spaces that they want to have for additional cafe spillout space. That could happen also to kind of anchor the edge of where perhaps your pedestrians are lingering to watch a festival. Perhaps you mark out where different types of, where the parade can happen. Also incorporating bollards, perhaps at the ends of the street that can be retractable. There's lots of different kind of configurations. Again, something you'd figure out in next design phases. The question about the tree canopy, this is one that's, as someone trained in landscape architecture, near and dear to my heart. So, you know, trying to balance what you want for your long-term vision versus what you have right now. The trees are probably near to their end of their life cycle, although they're not looking too bad right now, but they will, they're starting to get pretty stressed, I think. You can see that in the heaving sidewalks. And where you would want to put the trees to allow for that 16-foot sidewalk, they would not be in the right place. So removing those and thinking about a canopy. One thing that we've seen, again, the right caliper of tree, a larger tree would be great if you can afford it. Another way to sort of frame the space to make it feel a little bit more pedestrian scale as the trees are growing, we've seen cantenary lights strung across the Main Street from building to building. That creates that sort of sense of enclosure and canopy in some areas. So that's a creative strategy you could think about in the short term. And then I wanted to just touch on parking. I know John will probably hit on the parking garage, but in terms of parking on the downtown Main Street, we're looking at probably a loss of around 30 on the, 30 to 37 on that. We have to go back out there and just make sure we're counting all of them. We've been using aerials to do that pretty well, demarcated, so I feel pretty comfortable with that number, 37. But you're gaining on the side streets. If we go from that parallel configuration to an angled, you could add in an additional, I think it's about 12 in that location, in those locations right adjacent to Main Street. So again, final number count on that. We'd want to just make sure we're giving you that accurate number. And in terms of phasing, again, I think that's something that would be figured out in your next design phases, but certainly focusing on how you are constructing this to minimize business impacts. When I'm talking about phasing of just downtown Heritage Main Street, I think we are hearing Kitty Fernandez, other things might happen on a different time scale. But in terms of the phasing of the downtown Main Street, there's creative ways you can deal with construction. I know you do that in your other locations as well. So I think that's what I had on my list. Anything, John, you want to add in?
Touch on a couple of things beyond that point there. Parking garage, parking garage was not necessarily part of the original envisioning Main Street, but we anticipated some conversations around that, obviously. It became pretty evident in the first start of the charrette, the workshops, that a few people felt strongly that we needed to look at parking garages. You know, philosophically, I struggle with it, given how much surface parking we have available and how efficient and inexpensive that surface parking ultimately is. I was just looking up on the phone and I don't find a 2023 version of it, but in 2022, for private development, a parking garage is about $30,000 per space. Figure doing a public bid, you add 25% more cost to that point. And then that's just construction cost alone, not the land cost. You know, I haven't identified a great spot for a parking garage as yet in the downtown for anybody who wants us to demolish, to buy their building and demolish it to build a parking garage. I think some folks were focused on the property right back here, the church that the Catholic Church owns. I think the Catholic Church and some of its parishioners have other ideas and thoughts. I think also other folks in the community have other thoughts about maybe a more appropriate use such as affordable housing. So I think that was a pointed point for putting a parking garage in. So certainly, I think it's always on the table, the Mill Street parking lot. We can, we lease today and we lease it back to businesses there. That is a spot for potentially something more eventually. But I, you know, our efforts have really been to focus on trying to maximize availability of the surface parking, focus on that for the time being and see where we go with that. Otherwise, we also have to look at other things like business improvement districts and businesses and property owners participating financially in those kinds of things out there, at least for initial funding. Yes, you can charge for parking. One of the questions is the demand management kind of parking and parking systems. We've certainly looked at that. Certainly, nothing in this mix forecloses on that. And certainly, open to it, we've, you know, we've struggled with at times the Coastal Commission taking the position that downtown is part of your beach and coastal access and charging for any parking they tend to frown upon. So there's some policy issues related to that. That's why we haven't looked down Kelly Avenue to put in paid parking there, for example, with that. But I do, nothing forecloses on that, and I think it's all part of the package of looking at many things, including how do you encourage people to go to different places to park that are maybe not as, you know, you know, take a little bit of a walk, like a one-minute walk versus a no-minute walk. And then also, how do you look at that as a potential revenue stream to pay for the things that folks are wanting to see in the downtown as well? Karen, did I hit anything or miss anything that you wanted to touch on?
I could just touch on the question about businesses. And I'm confident in saying that business participation was consistent throughout the various phases. We've mentioned in passing a community stakeholder group. There were businesses represented within that group, including the leadership of the Downtown Association and the leadership of the Chamber of Commerce. I can recall several faces, just because it's a small town and I work on Main Street, at the public meetings as well as in the open studios at the library. And again, my colleagues at the city really hit the pavement, besides social media and whatnot, flyering and walking up and down Main Street at various times. A lot of businesses don't open till 11:00 or they're closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. So we really tried to vary our outreach and physically reach people and explain the project, let them know when to stop by. And we saw, again, a really interesting cross-section. Some were restaurants, some were retail, some were relatively do owners, some were legacy multi-generation family business owners. So yeah, very pleased about that, and thank you for raising the question. In regards to deliveries, delivery trucks and delivery routes did come up a lot throughout the project. They are anticipated, they are important. I specifically remember great conversations with Feed &amp; Fuel. They have a loading zone there, they have a lot of deliveries. We have pastorinos with hay bales, and we're just going to have to re-anticipate that. We think that the proposed idea allows for that flexibility of use, and we know a lot of those deliveries are part of our legacy industries.
Chair, if I could, you mentioned the murals on the utility boxes. I didn't want to leave that one alone and uncommented upon. We certainly could look at the receptacles. We have a kind of a plan to, again, try to help people figure out what goes where. So that's our first initial point is having information. I, you know, we could go and look at all of these, people get it wrong all the time. And so part of that issue is not mixing the streams. But I think that we could also look at ways to make that fun and get, add color and vibrancy to it, so something that we can certainly look at. The other piece of that is the utility boxes. And then, you know, I hate to cast aspersions on anybody, but PG&E has, at least at this point, told us we cannot touch their deal. I know they do it elsewhere, I've said the same thing. So it just, apparently, we're not asking the right people, but they're still opening. They do, a lot of areas have allowed because they control the signal controller, so a lot of those are murals are on the traffic signal controllers, which are actually all owned and controlled by Caltrans at this point. But we can certainly talk about that, but we are, I think, blessed with not having the signals on Main Street, and I think that is a wonderful thing. So I'd hate to put in signals just so we could put murals on the boxes. So I think that's the area. You know, Matthew and our staff have been working very closely on the issue of trying to figure out some of the mural programs. So let me just say that murals are something that this community is embracing. We are, we've been looking at some spots to look at expanding upon the idea from the 50th anniversary pumpkin mural and expanding that. And we know that there was questions and desire to look at a more contemporary, look at the farmworker community, for example, and sort of the heritage, you know, of the community, the Portuguese, you know, just connecting this and around. And so we are looking at that and hoping that we can integrate that. Chad and Steve have been working on the City Hall Park concept there, and part of that is to relook at the issue of the Rotary mural, which was only partially completed technically from all the evidence. So I think there's many ways that we can look at in expanding upon those programs.
Just want to mention, someone also asked about bike parking, and I wanted to say that, yes, that is part of the concept. It's probably pretty small to see on that concept, but we did locate it at each block. And you might want to think about whether it's along Main Street or on the perpendicular space. So there's wide generous bump out there, that's where you'd have your bike parking again, in that six-foot furnishing zone, you have a lot of space for bike parking, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Gossett, would this be an appropriate time for an idea or a suggestion that might pertain to all this?
Of course, please.
I'd like you all to think about the piece of dirt that is between the creek and the Tin Palace to the east side of the bridge. It's a sort of a lawn until it rains real hard, and then all the mud at the bridge backs up and it's a flood zone. But that can be addressed when the bridge gets cleared up. If there was a stairway down to that and it was developed as a small park, it would be one of the few places in the whole town where you could actually get out of a cold breeze and sit at a picnic table and eat a sandwich. It would be a use along the creek. You know, the creek flows through town, there's a reason the town was built where it is, and yet the creek just flows through there, and the only message is, get back from this creek at least 50 feet before you do anything, because that seems to be the ordinances that we all face. Many years ago, I remodeled what was Pasta Moon at the time, and our intent was to put a lunchtime eating area down there, well-protected from the weather. We inquired with the city about that. Somebody came out with a tape measure and said, "No, you can't even build a stairway from the building down to there because the stairway projecting from the building, supported from the building, would encroach in the 50-foot setback from the creek." Now, the creek may have moved in that time, but it seems like a kind of a dumb thing to step back from the creek and never use it for anything, even to look at it. So if you think about the way the sidewalk in front of the Tin Palace makes a jog to the bridge sidewalk, it'd be an easy place there to put a stair, a set of stairs. As you come into the town as a pedestrian, you'd be on that bridge and see that little parklet down there. And it could be a really nice spot if somebody doesn't get too wrapped up in all of the prohibitions that have to do with, "Don't go anywhere near the creek." I don't fully understand the idea. I mean, I get that you don't build buildings on the bank of the creek, but the idea that you're not allowed to go near it because something might get ruined doesn't seem very sensible to me. And I think that's, you know, let's just back up a little bit, talk about a parking garage. Start with the idea of where in town can you put a parking garage? Where in town can you put a park? Well, there's a place for a park, not a parking garage. But, you know, the idea that, gee, there's a lot of land, you could do whatever you want, there's not a lot of land. Historic downtown is pretty confined, pretty well-defined, but that spot could be nice if it's just approved for nice. Now, the building owners haven't made any approach to do that ever since we worked on Pasta Moon, which was, that was in the late 90s, because they were told at the time, the city said, "No, you can't do anything." So they just haven't made an effort. But that doesn't mean, I don't even know who owns that land, but I think it's the people who own the Tin Palace. And anyway, it's a suggestion.
Does someone from the public wish to speak? Please, come back.
I just wanted to clarify that the idea behind a parking garage comes because of the obliteration of the number of parking spaces on Main Street. I personally am not one of the people who need to have someone parking right in front of my shop, but I'm just telling you, the business community is going to come out in droves over the loss of even five parking spots, much less the 12 or 25 that we're going to lose on Main Street. It's a big, big issue for businesses on Main Street to lose parking. It's why we had problems with people putting parklets. There were people that didn't put parklets because their neighbors were so against the loss of three parking spots in front of their business. So to get this whole project through smoothly, we really do need a parking garage. And I know one spot has been identified behind, at the end, at the north end of Johnston Street, where it dead-ends there, behind Feed &amp; Fuel. It's by the creek, but isn't that city property?
Do any of my fellow committee members or commissioners wish to continue to speak out?
Can I?
Sure.
And maybe this is a question for-
And maybe this is a question for John. John, you mentioned something about city-owned property on Mill Street that is used for lease. I didn't quite understand what you were saying on that one.
Across from Its Italia, there's the parking lot there. The city has, for a number of years, leased that and leased back to both Its Italia and to the N there. And they were able to build their dumpster, their enclosure for their garbage. But, you know, that remains just simply as a lease situation.
Okay, with that, we will close this joint update session. Thank you. Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break. So be back here at 8:35. Okay, welcome back to our Planning Commission meeting. We'll move on to item 1A, election of a chair and vice chair.
to leave that one alone and uncommented upon. We certainly could look at the receptacles. We have a kind of a plan to, again, try to help people figure out what goes where. So that's our first initial point, is having information. You know, we could go and look at all of these. People get it wrong all the time. And so part of that issue is not mixing the streams. But I think that we could also look at ways to make that fun and add color and vibrancy to it. So something that we can certainly look at. The other piece of that is the utility boxes. And then, you know, I hate to cast aspersions on anybody, but PG&E has, at least at this point, told us we cannot touch their deal. I know they do it elsewhere. I've said the same thing. So it just, apparently, we're not asking the right people. But they're still opening. They do, a lot of areas have allowed because they control the signal controller. So a lot of those are murals are on the traffic signal controllers, which are actually all owned and controlled by Caltrans at this point. But we can certainly talk about that. But we are, I think, blessed with not having the signals on Main Street, and I think that is a wonderful thing. So I'd hate to put in signals just so we could put murals on the boxes. So I think that's the area. You know, Matthew and our staff have been working very closely on the issue of trying to figure out some of the mural programs. So let me just say that murals are something that this community is embracing. We are, we've been looking at some spots to look at expanding upon the idea from the 50th anniversary pumpkin mural and expanding that. And we know that there was questions and desire to look at a more contemporary, a look at the farmworker community, for example, and sort of the heritage, you know, of the community, the Portuguese, you know, this connecting this and around. And so we are looking at that and hoping that we can integrate that. Chad and Steve have been working on the City Hall Park concept there, and part of that is to relook at the issue of the Rotary mural, which was only partially completed technically from all the evidence. So I think there's many ways that we can look at in expanding upon those programs.
Just want to mention, someone also asked about bike parking, and I wanted to say that, yes, that is part of the concept. It's probably pretty small to see on that concept, but we did locate it at each block. And you might want to think about whether it's along Main Street or on the perpendicular space. So there's wide generous bump out there. That's where you'd have your bike parking again, in that six-foot furnishing zone. You have a lot of space for bike parking, so.
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Go ahead, you did your intro first.
Oh, sorry. I'm lost. This would be the time for election of the chair for the following, the next year. I will take nominations at this time.
I nominate Vice Chair Gossitt to be chair.
Second?
I second it.
Thank you. I will just ask for that. Any additional nominations on the floor? Seeing none? All those in favor? Should we do a roll call? How would you like to approach that?
Commissioner Reddick?
Voice vote would be adequate.
Okay.
Voice vote.
All those in favor say yes. All those non?
Congratulations, and I will hand it back to the Chair, Gossitt.
Okay, thank you. All right. And with that, we are going to take a nomination for the vice chair. Can I make that nomination?
Sure.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Joannus.
Second. And is she willing to do that? That's the other question.
Yes, I guess we should ask.
Yes, but I'll need a lot of training.
Okay, so then we'll all vote on that?
All those in favor?
Yes.
All those no? Motion approved.
Okay, and with that, we'll move on to the next item, election of a planning commissioner to the Safety Element Ad-Hoc Committee. And I think, is there going to be a staff presentation on this?
Very, I'll be very brief. If you recall, back in October, staff came and made a presentation with regard to the safety element, which is one of the required elements of the general plan required by the state of California. The idea was tossed out to, at that point, to, and the question to ask as to whether the commission would be interested in forming an ad hoc committee to help formulate that document with staff, and I'll say, in a soft-touch, light-touch manner. At that point, we heard a consensus that we should bring that back for consideration, and we've had no January meeting. And so we're here at this point to ask whether the commission would wish to create that subcommittee, that committee, ad hoc committee, would be made up of two individuals, would not be a quorum of this commission, as indicated in the staff memo. Probably once every six weeks or so, we'd probably look as a check-in to see where we are. To remind you, we are operating within a structure of a consolidated planning effort with multiple other agencies across the county, including San Mateo County. Our efforts will include coordination, collaboration, and joint outreach work with the county, recognizing that, one, the geographic boundaries, nobody knows where Half Moon Bay ends and begins as a city. Not many folks out there do. And we also recognize that natural disasters and the related responses to those also don't necessarily reflect neatly into geographic boundaries such as cities in the county. So we are here just requesting the commissions' feel and decision with regard to whether you wish to appoint such an ad hoc committee.
Okay. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions or comments?
I guess, you know, normally I wouldn't be against a committee, but I do have a hard time with a two-person ad hoc committee of planning commissioners for this kind of thing. Like, I understood for the local coastal plan, the land use plan, that was sort of a good use of, that's what planning commissioners are about, is land use. I don't think that commissioners are so much tasked with public safety as a, you know, anyway. I could see if you wanted a lot of input, just like the bike and pedestrian thing, that you would get people from all over, including somebody from the planning commission. This seems odd to me. So I'm happy to be talked out of it, but it seems like an odd use of the planning commission.
Commissioner Joannus?
I just see this as being an additional layer for staff to, you know, have a planning commissioner go in, or two planning commissioners go in, and then report back. I think it's reporting back to the commission to, you know, I guess, I'm not really sure what the commissioners would report back to the main commission. So I just see this as a layer. I would feel that it would be more streamlined if staff does their work with whoever they work with and consultants, and then report back if there's questions that we might have. I think it'd be great to have it in open discussion and in the forum of the public setting. So I'm not really seeing the need or the benefit of it, because I think it's going to come back to the planning commission anyway. It's just, you know, another layer of reporting by a planning commissioner to the major, to the full body. So that's my comment.
I have a little bit of some of the same questions about what the role of the subcommittee would be exactly. I'm a little bit sorry that Commissioner Hernandez isn't here, because he, of course, did some very heavy and important duty with Commissioner Benjamin for, I was going to say, over years, no doubt seemed like years. And my impression from talking to those guys was that they were writing a large amount of prose to capture the nuances of all of these dozens or hundreds of policies in the land use plan. That, to me, would be a daunting job for planning commissioners to do as far as the safety element documents go. So, again, I'm left with a little bit of fuzziness about what the duty actually would be.
And I agree with everything you've said, so I won't repeat what you said. Thank you. So at this point, it sounds like we're not going to nominate a fellow commissioner. Is that correct? Am I reading this correctly?
I think it says by motion.
Yeah, and so...
The, it would be by motion if you were appointing.
Right.
You need not take any action if you're not going to
Okay.
to deal with it. Chair, may I just respond, just so it's not left
Of course.
hanging out.
Of course, please.
There are a little bit with that deal, and I respect your decision and perfectly fine with that decision. I think, from staff's perspective, it is an extremely prescriptive document that the state has dictated to us. We have to look at very specific issues and sort of respond in very specific ways, a bit like the housing element, but even more prescriptive. So from that perspective, it is very different than the LCLUP. I absolutely concur with you on that. And we would not be looking for pages and pages of prose being prepared and written with this. The only reason that I would say I think there's still value in it, but I'm not going to argue with your decision process if that is the way you go with it, and that is only because you hear things, you have sense of things, you, you know, have communications with the community. And sometimes, we are shut out of some of those conversations. But more importantly, we sometimes get blinded and tunnel vision in our review of things as staff, and our consultants do as well. And sometimes, it's good to balance that out with some input. And we're, Commissioner Gorn and I were talking about this, and in government, the worst thing you can have is a surprise. And I would hate for us to get too far down the road and be surprised by the response from this commission, that we could have perhaps foreseen some of that and reacted and responded to that through the ad hoc committee. So that was really, for me, still sitting here, the basis for why we were advocating at all for that, simply as a way to deal with that. Now, we can take care of that by feeding back information to the full commission, and we can do that. So I think we can accommodate and deal with it, but I just, I didn't, I think, add clarity fully in the presentation to why we were suggesting such a thing to begin with. But I can count votes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think we will move on to the next item, study session for the Planning Commission, a fundamental refresh.
Great, thank you, Chair Gossitt. We are here to give you, we did this presentation, our variation on it about a year ago, and the fundamentals are your Brown Act, basically the fundamental laws that are governing how this planning commission operates. And so I'm here with my colleague Marlene, who filled in for me a couple weeks ago when I was on vacation, because these presentations are always more fun when it's more than one voice, and it's nine o'clock at night. So we want to keep your attention as we make it through these slides. So we're going to kind of go back and forth. If you have any questions along the way, please stop us. We can try to answer them. You know, these issues, they come up regularly. You all have been on the commission now for, you know, a while, and so we've seen these issues come up. But if any pique your interest and you want to talk a little bit more, just flag us down and we'll go ahead. Okay, so, and I have the clickers. Let me see if it's clicking. Bridget, did I do something wrong?
Oh, it wasn't on.
Oh.
It's okay.
There we go. Okay, so, as I said, we're going to cover a few different areas of law. We're going to go over the Brown Act, which is the state's open meetings law, conflicts of interest, and there's kind of two sets there. There are the financial ones covered by the Political Reform Act, and then there are these sort of common law conflicts of interest, which we'll touch on briefly. And then, at the end, we'll go over the Planning Commission bylaws and just what's in the, remind everyone what's in the bylaws. You can always go back and read those to remind yourself as well. So first up is the Brown Act. So the general idea behind the Brown Act So the general idea behind the Brown Act, as the slide says, is that public agencies exist to carry out the people's business, and the people have the right to be informed. The basic idea is that all, almost all, with some exceptions, public decisions should be made in the open in a transparent manner, not behind closed doors. There are some exceptions which we'll get into, but that's, that's the basic rule. And the heart of the Brown Act are these two fundamental rules that meetings have to take place in public, with, as I mentioned, some exceptions, and also that the public needs to be given proper notice of all meetings.
Thank you, Winter. So in a minute, we'll get into requirements for how a meeting needs to be noticed and conducted. But first, we have a few slides on how the Brown Act defines a meeting. So what is a meeting under the Brown Act? So as you'll see on the slide, a meeting is any gathering of a majority of commissioners to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item within the subject matter of the commission. And so this is a pretty broad definition, and it applies both to formal and informal gatherings of commissioners and also to electronic communications between commissioners. And so here's an example of what this could look like in an informal setting. If three commissioners run into each other in a coffee shop and start up a discussion that turns to proposed development in town, that would fall into this definition under the Brown Act of a meeting. And it would likely also be a Brown Act violation because the meeting was not noticed and not, the, the public wouldn't have been invited to that meeting. And the Brown Act prohibits serial meetings, or serial meetings violate the Brown Act's open meeting requirements. And serial meetings occur through a series of communications, each one of which only involves a portion of a legislative body, but which collectively involve a majority of the body. And these meetings are subject, this type of meeting or serial communications, subject to the Brown Act. And specifically, the Brown Act says that a majority of the members of a legislative body shall not, outside a formal meeting, use a series of communications of any kind directly or through intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action of any kind on the subject matter of the legislative body. And so a serial meeting can occur in two different types of ways. This is either through a daisy chain or a hub-and-spoke method. And this is what a daisy chain looks like. So if Commissioner A contacts Commissioner B, and then Commissioner B contacts Commissioner C, and so on, until a quorum of the commission has discussed or deliberated or taken action on an item within the subject matter of the jurisdiction. And this is what a hub-and-spoke looks like. So Commissioner A, which is the, who serves as the hub, sequentially contacts Commissioner B and C and so on until a quorum has been contacted to discuss an item under the, the subject matter of the jurisdiction. This could also happen if a staff member served as the hub, essentially, an intermediary to share communications among a majority of members of the commission. If you could go to the next slide. So electronic communications are also an important thing to have in mind relating to this definition of a meeting. So using email, social media, and other forms of electronic communication can inadvertently involve, result in meetings that are prohibited under the Brown Act. So for example, a member's use of the email reply all button can result in prohibited serial communications between a majority of members of the commission. And then on the topic of social media.
Oh, and I'll just pipe up there.
Yes.
This is why you'll see if we send you an email, we usually do put you all in the BCC so that you can't reply all. We might also say, please don't reply all. So we're, we're on top of this, and staff is on top of it, and we'll remind you and try and set things up so we don't have any, any accidents with the email communication.
Thank you, Winter. And so Assembly Bill 992, which took effect in 2021, amends the Brown Act to clarify which types of social media communications are permissible by members of a legislative body. And it provides that members of a local legislative body may, may engage in conversations or communications on social media, but in limited circumstances. And so those circumstances are to answer questions or to provide information to the public or to solicit information from the public regarding a matter that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. And then on the other hand, AB 992 prohibits a majority of members of a legislative body from using a social media platform to discuss agency business of a specific nature among themselves. So again, that would be an informal meeting of a majority of members of the commission, for example. It also prohibits any member of a local agency's legislative body from responding directly to any communication from another member on a social media platform on a topic within the subject matter jurisdiction of the agency. There are a few exceptions, or rather, there, there are carve-outs in the Brown Act from the meeting definition. And these are exceptions that essentially recognize common circumstances where it might make sense for members of a legislative body to either be able to meet with others individually or circumstances where by just attending a meeting alone, there's a relatively low risk of inadvertent meetings of a majority of a member of a legislative body. So you can see these six exceptions listed here. The first one is individual contacts between a member of a legislative body and any other person. So this exception recognizes the right to confer with constituents, with colleagues, with members of the press, with staff. So it recognizes that the need to be able to meet individually. But of course, in this context, individual contacts like this can't be used to do in stages what would be prohibited in, in one step. So it can't be used for, to create a serial meeting. The other exceptions are public conferences. So the majority of a legislative body can attend a conference or a similar gathering that's open to the public and that addresses issues of general interest to the public or to public agencies. They can also attend community meetings. So the majority of a legislative body can attend an open and publicized community meeting held by another organization to address a topic of community interest. They can also attend meetings of other legislative bodies. So as long as these meetings are open and publicized, and these can be the meetings of another body of the local agency itself or the legislative body of another agency. Two more exceptions. One is the majority of a legislative body can attend the meeting of a standing committee of that same jurisdiction or of that legislative body itself. And they can also attend social or ceremonial events. But note that the following are meetings. So I have a few examples of meetings that are subject to the Brown Act. So collective briefings of the commission with staff members, that would be a Brown Act meeting. Private retreats or workshops of the commission or another legislative body, that's a Brown Act meeting. And of course, serial meetings, as we've discussed previously.
And I'll just pipe up here because I know you all have attended conferences and community meetings and things. And one thing I think we've talked about before is just to keep, keep in mind the public perception, too. So if you're all there and you're all sitting together hovering over a table whispering, that might give the appearance that you're actually, you know, talking about planning commission things. So just keep that in mind. You can, of course, attend, but you're, you're not to use it as, obviously, an opportunity to, you know, plot your, your vote on the next development that's coming before you.
And so next are a few slides.
Oh, and these are me.
You're covering.
Oh, yeah. And then the other one, just on your point, Marlene, from the previous one. It's not on this list, but you, I'm sure you know, city council has closed sessions as well, and there are rules around that. We've never had a closed session with the planning commission. It's not typically something that is required. So it's, we don't really cover it here. Okay, so public meeting requirements. This slide basically has the notice requirements. The agenda has to be posted 72 hours before regular meetings or 24 hours before special meetings. And the agenda has a brief description of each item that's going to be discussed. And obviously, the point of this is you want to make sure that there's a member of the public that's interested in something, they have enough information to know, oh, I should go to that meeting because I know that's going to be discussed. The flip side is, we're not supposed to discuss anything that's not on the agenda. This, and we can, you know, the exceptions are, public can raise comments, whatever they want to say. The commissioners, you can request information. Staff can give a report back. You can request that an issue be placed on a future agenda or make brief announcements. This comes up fairly regularly at the end of our agenda when we have commissioner communications and the directors' reports. And what we try and keep an eye out, you're out for, even though it's late in the evening, is if the discussion starts kind of rolling and there's a lot of back and forth, we might say, oh, reminder, this isn't on the agenda. If you want to really discuss this, maybe place it on a future agenda so it can be agendized and any interested member of the, of the public can be in attendance. And then some more Brown Act requirements for the meetings themselves. The written materials that you all get need to be made available to the public. This usually just comes in the agenda packet, which is 72 hours in advance. Sometimes there'll be, you know, last-minute memos, and then staff will just attempt to, you know, provide, make those written materials available as soon as they reasonably can. Public has to be free to attend and observe. Now, you know, we're, we're in the stage of hybrid meetings, so public has a couple of different options. Although we do try and make clear on the, on the meeting agendas that the Zoom is sort of, you know, we're doing our best with Zoom. If Zoom doesn't work, you know, the, the main opportunity for public attendance is still in person. So we don't want to get in a position where if Zoom doesn't work, we can't carry on with the meeting. So that's, that's kind of the new world after COVID and coming back into in-person meetings. The public has to be allowed to speak. This is why we, you know, have, offer public comment, both at the beginning for things that are not on the agenda and then for every agenda item. And we impose reasonable limits. We have a three-minute, typically the chair imposes a three-minute limit. There are some exceptions if we're dealing with a, you know, an applicant that we want to give extra time to, to present their, their project. And then minutes need to be recorded for all, for all the meetings. One sort of side note, I think, you know, we, we haven't been doing it so much, but sometimes we'll ask members of public or on the speaking cards, we'll ask them to give their name and identifying information, mostly for our record-keeping. But of course, we can't force them to. If someone wanted to come and not provide that information and still speak, that would be required, that we would allow them to. Remote meetings.
Remote meetings, or remote attendance at meetings, so both. So we're now essentially fully out of the era of special. Rules for meeting attendance that were in place during the pandemic. And so the default rule, once again, is that commissioners need to attend meetings in person to be able to participate at the meetings. But the Brown Act and the planning commission bylaws do offer limited options for commissioners to participate in meetings remotely where the circumstances meet narrow criteria. And I should note that these are rules that apply to members of the commission. They aren't rules for city staff or consultants who are often here in person, but who from time to time will be appearing via Zoom in meetings. So the first option is the Brown Act's teleconference option. This is an option that was in place long before COVID. And I first want to flag that the planning commission's bylaws has rules for virtual meeting attendance that are very similar to this teleconference act, option under the Brown Act, but that are a bit stricter. So I'll explain the different rules here and then also flag where the planning commission would need to comply with the stricter requirement in the bylaws to be able to take advantage of this type of option. But big picture, this is an option that you might take advantage of if you know in advance that you'll be traveling or not able to come to a meeting in person at a time when you want to be able to participate in the meeting and, and you have that advance notice. So under this option, each location or the location that you would be calling in from to the meeting needs to appear in any hearing notice for the meeting and, and on the agenda for the meeting. That includes the address that you'll be calling in from, and if you were at a hotel, it would be the hotel room, room number. This is where the bylaws are also a bit stricter. They require that you give at least two weeks' advance notice to the community development director if you were going to be taking advantage of this option. So not just enough time in advance for the location to be on the agenda, but a full two weeks in advance. The agendas also need to be posted at the off-premise location that you would be calling in from. Again, even if it's a private residence or a hotel room. And that location needs to be open to members of the public. So members of the public would need to be able to enter that space, and there would need to be sufficient equipment for a member to use, such as a speaker phone, to be able to participate at that location. And this is also where the bylaws are a little stricter. They require that that location be ADA accessible. And what, well, the Brown Act says that one or more commissioners, that if one or more commissioners are attending remotely under this option, at least a quorum of commissioners need to be present within Half Moon Bay city limits. This is where the bylaws say that only one commissioner at once can take advantage of this remote option. And that if a second wants to at the same meeting, it's the first commissioner who gives notice to the community development director who's able to take advantage of the option. And so our advice here is that if you think you might want to attend a meeting using this teleconference option or, you know, slash the option under the bylaws, to contact the city attorney's office as soon as possible so we can help you determine if you'll be able to take advantage of this and the requirements that will need to be complied with. I, I also wanted to flag, there is a new option that was added to the Brown Act under AB 2449, which is the just cause or the emergency option. This is also one that sunsets in just two years, but it's designed for remote participation in meetings if something truly unexpected comes up fairly close to the time of a meeting. So that prevents you from attending in person, so it could be attending to an ill family member or having a contagious disease yourself. It's more flexible than the teleconference option, doesn't require the same posting requirements. But we do want to flag that there is some conflict between this just cause option and the commission's bylaws, which, as I just described, are fairly strict in terms of the remote meeting requirements. And so our office would need to take a closer look at this option and the bylaws to see if, if, how they might work together.
Yeah, and this one was sort of like as we were coming out of the pandemic era. It was, I think, supposed to be a little bit of a soft landing, like, don't worry, we're still going to have some emergency situations when you can attend virtually. But as Marlene said, it's, it sunsets at the end of 2025, and it's fairly complicated and cumbersome to like fit into the exact definitions, so it's not clear how useful it is beyond the old teleconference option. You ready?
Yeah. And then finally, just a reminder that there can be legal consequences for Brown Act violations. There is a possibility that an interested individual could file a civil suit to try to invalidate an action taken by the commission at a meeting that violated the Brown Act. That's something to have in mind. If, if that lawsuit was successful, the city would need to pay the attorney's fees of the folks who brought that lawsuit. There is also a possibility for criminal prosecution and for misdemeanor convictions for serious Brown Act violations.
All right, moving on to conflicts of interest. We'll cover a couple of different ones. Did you have a question?
Can I ask, can I ask you a question? So, you know, we're always really careful about Brown Act, especially if something, if something on the agenda. We never talk, you know, more than two people. something on the agenda, we never talk, you know, more than two people. But I guess I had a question. So when we're done with something, when we're finished and we've ruled on a topic, can we talk about it afterwards? That's something I've never known, like with three people.
I mean, I would say that's still, I mean, that there is probably a possibility that most of the things you decide on could come back in some form in the future. So I would just be careful about that. And it is still topics, you know, kind of within the purview of the Planning Commission. So, you know, I can look and see if there are any cases on this with, if you're talking about things that, you know, we're sort of like, you're debriefing after the fact. But I would say the general purpose of the rule is to have the discussions in the public forum, not kind of a sidebar. So, but we could take a look and report back if we see anything.
A time extension, it could come back two years later.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've definitely had them, things come back. Any, any other questions on the Brown Act?
Yeah, for example, today's agenda item, 1A, is to do the safety element, Commissioner Safety Element Ad-Hoc Committee, right? Now, dovetailing on what you, Commissioner Gorn's mentioned, can we discuss about that? Because that is not a, an, an agenda item that is necessarily going to, would it come back? It's, it's got nothing to do with land use or any of those things. So things like this that showed up.
Yeah, and I would just say, again, the, the overarching point here is the Brown Act does not want you sort of off generating a decision or convincing people to do something that could come before the Planning Commission outside of the public forum. That discussion is supposed to be in the public forum. So, you know, and again, two of you can talk about these things. You can't have a quorum of people and you can't have a serial meeting. That's, that's the, that's the general rule. I mean, I think if you wanted to talk high-level policy, I mean, even then, I would say, three of you together talking high-level policy about whether you would want to have, you know, an ad hoc committee for the safety element, seems like a discussion you should actually have in the public. So, you know, I think it's good to just keep the big picture in mind. And I think with these things, you don't want to, like, sail too close to the wind, as they say, like, keep a, keep a nice buffer between you and, and the law, given the nature of these laws. Okay, so we'll cover Political Reform Act and then common law conflicts of interest. Political Reform Act really applies to financial conflicts of interest. Some of you may have encountered this if you've ever asked the FPPC for advice on conflicts of interest and you might have thrown in there something about, you know, you know, you had some, like, interest in the project that was not financial and they'll always say, we don't, we don't cover that, like, ask your city attorney's office about common law conflicts of interest. So, so that's the, that's kind of the scope of what the Political Reform Act covers. This slide shows the four-step process that you would go through to see if you had a disqualifying conflict of interest in any project or matter that might come before the commission. And the general rule of the Political Reform Act is that public officials may not make, participate in making, or in any way use their official position to influence a governmental decision in which they know they have a disqualifying conflict. So you're not supposed to use your position to influence a decision on an issue where you have this type of material conflict or financial interest. And just to be clear, this goes, if you have a financial interest, it doesn't make a difference if you would be benefited by the project or hurt by the project. Either one is sort of considered like an undue influence or a conflict where the law does not want you to be in a position of deciding between your own interest and the public interest. Your job as commissioners, when you're acting in that capacity, is to just have the public's interest in mind. That said, sometimes when this comes up, there might be a little feeling of like, did I do something wrong if I have a conflict of interest? If I have to recuse? That should, there should be no shame in recusing for a conflict of interest. It just means you have a life, you have investments, you participate in the community, and that you're careful in considering what your job is as a commissioner. In trying to identify whether you have any financial interest, you all fill out Form 700s, so that's like a good issue spotting tool. I think here we primarily deal with, like, your house, right? Like, this is the main thing that comes up with conflicts of interest at the Planning Commission because we're talking about land use decisions. And we'll get to the slide on how to think about whether you have a disqualifying conflict when you have a real estate interest. But as a general matter, there are other kinds of financial interests, including sources of income for you and your spouse. There's, of course, real property. There are investments. There's, you know, if you serve in, in management for a for-profit entity that maybe is, you know, got an application that's coming before the Planning Commission, there are, it does not apply if you're on a nonprofit board, but there are common law considerations. So not the Political Reform Act, but the common law conflicts that we're going to discuss in a minute, that could come up if you have a role in a nonprofit. And so this is the, generally the four-step analysis you'll always use. We also use it, you know, when we're dealing with real property interests. And the first step is to just identify if there's a reasonably foreseeable financial effect of the decision that's coming before you. The second question is whether that financial effect is material. And then the third is whether it's distinguishable from the effect on the public generally. And then the fourth is, are you going to be using your official position to influence the decision? Which I think that fourth one is probably always going to be answered yes. We have had some, you know, this distinguishable from effect on the public generally. This comes up sometimes when we're doing big planning documents. And we've had this, I think, with the LCP, we kind of had to be careful and say, you know, there's a general rule that if you're acting on like a, a, a planning document that's affecting everyone in the city, the fact that you are one of the everyone doesn't disqualify you from taking a decision on it. So moving on to the more relevant slide for our purposes, this is, I think we should change this slide because we like to refer to it as a doughnut and it doesn't have a doughnut shape here. But the, this is some guidance that the FPPC has on whether impacts to your home or other real property are material financial impacts under the Political Reform Act. This used to be, a number of years ago, there was kind of a bright-line rule that if you were within 500 feet, that was a conflict outside of it. There wasn't. Now there's this doughnut where if your houses, or if the project is within 500 feet of your real property, there's a presumption that you have a conflict of interest, that there's going to be some material effect on your property value, for example. You can rebut it with evidence, clear and convincing evidence that actually there won't be a material effect. But we would strongly encourage you to get an FPPC advice letter if that's the route you're going because of this presumption that there is a conflict. If the project is between 500 and 1,000 feet from your real property, there's no presumption one way or the other. You just kind of have to make a decision based on, you know, reason and the evidence before you, whether there's, you think there's going to be a material effect. And then if the, if the project is beyond 1,000 feet away from your real property, there's a presumption of no conflict. So you're pretty safe in assuming that you don't have a conflict of interest and can participate in the decision. I know we've had a number of commissioners in the past ask for FPPC advice on these conflict issues. They have an advice line where you can just talk to somebody. But if you want a written letter, it's good to ask for it a bit in advance. They're going to ask you for as much detail and information as you can give about the situation, about your property interest. And they'll always sort of caveat their opinion with, these are the facts as you've told them to us. If those facts are incorrect, none of the, none of the following applies, but we're basing our assessment on, on the facts as you've told them to us.
I do have a question. How does one determine material effect on a project? What are the thresholds or what, what is it looked at?
Well, we would probably, you know, if there's a question and you can't get an advice letter, we might actually look at other advice letters to see what's been considered a material effect in the past, just to get some, some sense of it. And by the way, these are all sort of your individual obligations. We are, of course, here to help you work through them, but that's why you'll sometimes see us say, you know, you would, it's, this is up to you. You are making the decision. It's your responsibility to decide whether you're in compliance with this or not, but we do try and help as much as we can. And so there are no bright-line rules other than this. This one is, is pretty helpful in if you had some other financial interest. There are some more guidelines if it's income. There are sort of thresholds, income of $500 or more. That's more about identifying whether you actually have a financial interest. And then the materiality is always going to be a little mushy, right? Like, how, how material is the effect going to be if the city approves, you know, a new trail within 1,000 feet of your, of your home? That's going to be something that, you know, it's, it's going to be hard to say there's any bright-line rules about that. You kind of have to think through, and you probably want to be somewhat conservative, again, in your approach here. But this is why, you know, typically we would just say, seek an advice letter and then you've got that in hand and you can proceed with some comfort. Okay. Okay, so outside of the Political Reform Act are the common law conflicts of interest. And this is really, you might even say, just sort of common sense. These are court cases that have looked at actions by, by governmental bodies to determine whether, even though there wasn't a violation of the statute, whether there was any other sort of conflict of interest that would interfere with kind of the basic presumption or premise that the public agencies are there to do the public's bidding and they need to do it in a way that ensures the public feels secure that they're not out to advance their own interests. So here you kind of want to look for an appearance of impropriety. You know, that one's a little bit more wishy-washy. The due process cases basically apply when you have an actual applicant for a project. So this isn't when you're establishing the, you know, some land use policy, but you have someone coming and asking you to apply the city's law to their project, give them a permit. And those applicants do have a right to a fair hearing with all commissioners maintaining an open mind and with access to the same sorts of evidence. So this is where sometimes our ex-party communications come up and we want to make sure, and I, I'm not sure we even have a slide on this one. There are rules in the bylaws about this, though, and we have talked about them before, that if, you know, you're coming into a hearing, there's a project application before you and, and you've been out in the community and you've taken a look at the property and you've talked to the applicant or you've talked to neighbors, those are things that you're going to want to disclose at the beginning of the hearing so that everyone is on the same page, operating with the same, the same evidence. And that's all going to the sort of due process issues. It's also, this has come up sometimes when maybe there's like a study session or something, a preliminary session on a project. And we want to make sure that, or you should just know that if you express a very strong opinion about whether you're going to approve the project or not at a preliminary phase, that could be evidence or an indication that you don't have an open mind and it would be unfair to have somebody with, who doesn't have an open mind, participate in the final decision-making on, we call these quasi-judicial or quasi-adjudicatory proceedings, where you have an applicant coming and asking for a city permit. Okay.
Oh, this one isn't me. So I'm just going to be saying a few words about the Public Records Act. So this is the state's document retention law and document disclosure and sharing law. So this requires the city to allow public inspection of documents that are generated, owned, used, or retained by the city. And it has a few limited exceptions from disclosure. A few examples, documents that are prepared for litigation are exempt from disclosure. Certain documents are exempt from disclosure for privacy reasons. That includes personnel records. But the vast majority of documents are required to be disclosed if they're requested by members of the public. And the Public, Public Records Act works together with state document retention laws that require the city to keep documents of particular classes for specific amounts of time and to go through a public process to destroy documents. And the city places many types of public records on its website so that they're easily accessible to the public. That includes agendas from its Brown Act bodies, like the Planning Commission and the City Council, staff reports, meeting minutes, budget materials. Those are readily available and already disclosed to the public. A key point to keep in mind here is that your emails and your text messages on matters of, or on topics related to the commission's business are likely public records and they may be subject to disclosure if requested by members of the public. So given that, you want to ensure you're using language and content that's appropriately professional and just to keep in mind, again, they can be subject to disclosure.
Yeah, John was saying also, your, your email and also your, if you are using your private, private, personal email for city business, that could also be public records. And I'll just note, there's like a logistical thing here. It is, it is very challenging if you get a Public Records Act request to actually pull texts. So just, I don't know that you actually need to be using texts to be doing your city business, but you might want to just keep the logistics in mind, too, for when we do get Public Records Act requests, that it increases sort of the complexity of responding if you've, if you're conducting your city business across many kind of formats. Okay, we're on to our last section. We're in the home stretch and we'll go over this pretty quickly. This is Planning Commission bylaws, which I'm sure you all read on a regular basis just to refresh your recollection. But if not, we'll go over some high points. The bylaws were adopted by the City Council and they govern Planning Commission meetings and commissioner conduct. And they basically, they were approved by the City Council in 2017. And as Marlene was saying, they are consistent with but stricter than the Brown Act in some respects, so good to remember that. Here are some of the topics the bylaws cover. Authorization of the commission, what your purpose and function is, who's a member, how appointments are made, some, some rules about absences and vacancies. Trying to think if there's anything sort of buried in there that you wouldn't think But this is, in general, what's the, sort of some of the topics that are covered. It also has some guidance for how the commission should be welcoming and establishing public participation, making sure that the forum is comfortable for everyone to participate, encouraging participation, making sure that everyone is heard, no one dominates, but also that everyone gets also that everyone gets an opportunity, and, you know, that we strive to provide detailed minutes of the meetings for those who weren't able to attend. There's some logistics in terms of what goes on the agendas and the minutes, public participation and meeting structure. I think we've played around with meeting structure a little bit here in terms of when there's the clarifying questions and when we're taking public comment. That's totally appropriate. There is a sort of baseline that is set forth in the bylaws, but it's allowed for you all to change that if you decide that a different structure would be helpful. Although the one, going back to sort of due process, we wouldn't want to have commission deliberations before the public comment. So that's kind of the important rule, is we want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to speak before deliberations begin, because that's when you're really supposed to be incorporating all the evidence that you've heard. And then also, staff is here to support the planning commission, so I think you're primarily probably working with staff from Community Development Department. But we have frequent visits from Public Works and City Engineers Office, who can answer questions if you have questions for them. And then the City Attorney's Office, we're always here to help as well. Oh, and I think that's the end of our presentation. Any other questions on that refresher course? Remind you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so then with that, we'll move on to the Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair. Again, congratulations, and to the Vice Chair, congratulations. I don't know if we fully said that. So thank you for this. We have busy, busy coming times. I think the, the most pressing item of interest perhaps to this commission is that next Tuesday, the City Council is going to consider the two appeals filed on the Coside Land Trust Trail Project. We are finalizing a, the staff report for that. It'll be online no later than Friday, and I encourage you to take a look at it. I think staff has done phenomenal job in terms of responding to it, I think meaningfully. I think also, you know, understanding what the intentions and, and good intentions from those who filed the appeal, and I think there's very good responses to that. So it should be an interesting conversation. On the 12th meeting for the Planning Commission, big issue on that one is really the annual progress report on Measure D. We may have a signed permit for Coside Hope. We're still working through that one. It's a sign size issue that slightly often requires your, your approval for that. So we're, we're still going through that, and we'll figure out if there are anything else that might slide onto that, but that's.
John, are you talking about our ratification of what you're recommending for Measure D? Is that what you were talking about? I didn't understand what you were saying about Measure D.
Yes, it's the Measure D, it's the annual Measure D report.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. The 26th, you are looking at the multi-asset roadway rehabilitation project. You know, you've got to love Caltrans for those. But this is basically the Wavecrest North project for pavement rehabilitation and various components and pieces of modification to the Highway 1 corridor, not including the work we're already planning to do for the Highway 1 North. So that's a pretty significant project, and it is on a critical path timeline for their funding and bidding, and we are working feverishly to get that done. On the 19th, for the City Council, we will take up your recommendation regarding the, the annual report on the Measure Ds and bring that to the council. I think the, perhaps the most interesting piece of that conversation will center around the question of whether we should place an initiative on the ballot on Measure D to discuss affordable housing exemption perhaps, and measure, and ADU exemption issues. I think some of you attended the recent listening session, and there was a lot of interest in that. Beyond Tim Pond has been a very strong advocate, but other folks out there as well. With the election coming up in November, it seems like the logical time for going to do this, to bring that forward. So that will be part of the conversation with the City Council at that, that night. I will add, on that evening, there will be, we were planning to bring the, for a study session, the rent stabilization and just cause evictions and tenant protections ordinance to the community and the council as well. So if you have an interest in that, come or tune in. That's the 19th of March. And we have, the Architecture Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet on the 14th. 555 Kelly is coming up on that, as well as the 540 Parisma Street Mixed Use Project. And on tomorrow afternoon, we have a Director's Hearing on the conversion of one of the Yellow House building for BK Motors to B&amp;B or short-term rental, whatever you want to call it with that. So that's coming up as well. So a lot of things, and I will say, we're going to do the same show we gave you tonight with regard to the Streetscape Master Plan to the Parks and Rec and BPAC tomorrow night. And so if you're so inclined, you know, but just don't break the Brown Act here. But, you know, we're excited about that, but certainly, and that night, tomorrow night, I will add, so there may be of greater interest to, to some of you, we're going to have a conversation about e-bikes, and we'll also touch on capital improvement program, which will come to this commission for general plan consistency determination, probably April, May timeframe. So I think a good joint meeting with those three items tomorrow night, so we're kind of excited about that. That, I will say, we are in the process of, of finding a, an interim CDD Director, we, to fill big shoes left by Jill. And you saw Jill here, she's still with us, she's still working on, on projects and dealing with that, but also taking care of Mom and Dad. But, and we could have a, something to you in the near, very near future. We may have a contract on the March 5th, council meeting, where we're still working through that issue. But, and at this point, we are focused on a temporary placement for most likely a retired annuitant, someone who's been, been through and tried and true. And as soon as we have that individual under contract and, and set up, we will look at the most available PC meeting to introduce, and obviously happy to introduce privately and personally to each one of you, however you would like to go through that. And that'll be up to that individual as well, how they kind of want to introduce themselves and get to know you each. That concludes my report.
Thank you, John. Do we have any Planning Commissioner communications? With that, I would, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.